Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. I take it for granted that Mickey's always here to set this up beforehand. And Galen from BCTV is here tonight instead of Peter, and he's been extremely helpful, as has Lori Garland. So I really do appreciate your patience. I will never, never say that I'm great with computers, so, but that's okay. So thank you all for your patience. Let's go over the agenda, review and revision of agendas. Does anybody have anything they want to add? I know I certainly do. But Russ, Carolyn, anybody else?
No, I'm all set.
I'm okay.
Okay, I would like to add correspondence. Well, I guess you can get in minutes of correspondence, but with Bridget Blanchard, which was something that came from Crystal Corvieu in the past. So at some point, I'd like to discuss masks. So if you have any thoughts yet, if we want to go to old business with that, I'm fine.
Fine with me.
Okay, so old business, let's just add the mask mandate. So thank you. Other than that, I don't have anything else, so we can move on to minutes.
Okay, thanks, Beth. I am going to turn on my, so I'm not going to be able to see you, but I'm going to turn it on. I would like to do the minutes for the 24th. I think it's important that we complete these and get them done. I was able to do track changes on these. And for the very most part, there are just things that, that my spell check picked up. I do. I do also, when I checked with Meg right about this and asked if my letter had, the letter that I presented had been attached, she said that it had not been attached. And so the letter that I sent out is attached to the end of this, and I make note of that in correspondence. Then I've just made a few little changes. Then down top of page two, I was admonished by Russ at that meeting to not use the term geographically isolated. He said it was not defined and that he had gotten information from an attorney at the AOE in March of 2021. I checked with the attorney, Donna Russo Savage, and she actually sent me the email thread between Russ and the attorney. And also, I believe Emily Simmons, who is also a staff attorney at the AOE, responded. And it looked to me, I know that the term geographically isolated has been used. You just have to read through Act 46, it's there in 2015. And the term was also widely used when we have had discussions of small school grants. So I have included a note next to that because I think it's important that people understand that geographic isolation or geographically isolated is a term that's used. And in fact, in their email, the only place I could find where something was not defined was geographic considerations. I'd also note that not every term is defined in statute, however, it is used. So I've included a note on that there. Then mostly, we go through some, just adding some hyphens. They're minor, but they just came up with spell check, so I thought I'd fix them. And then when Eric Malkowski was talking, Russ noted much of what he said was not clear in the recording. I remember very clearly that he said that a parent would not drop their child off on a busy road like Route 11 and leave them there to be picked up by the school bus. So that was a very vivid memory for me. I've just made a few other little changes. And let's see, then under new business, Carolyn briefly reviewed the lack of state funding for school facilities and implied that that was the reason for not implementing improvements to the WES building and most other school buildings throughout the state. So that's in addition. In fact, I'm going to add an S to that, buildings. And then at the end is the letter that I wanted attached that had not been attached to the minutes. So I would move approval of the minutes for August 24th with those changes.
Okay, I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a mention that the minutes as they're submitted have been editorialized extensively, which is what Carolyn criticized me for doing with editorializing minutes. But it seems that if she does it, it's okay. So that's all I just would like to observe. Thank you.
Russ, could you point out to me where I've editorialized?
Well, there's an awful lot of stuff in here that was actually not said at the meeting. It was stuff that's been added after the fact. And it's an editorialization that you're including comments and views that were not expressed during the meeting and shouldn't be part of the minutes. But I'm only one vote, so that's simply what I'm saying. Thank you.
Well, I think that you have also shaded a lot of the testimony in this. And so in terms of editorializing, I think you've done that too. I did not change much of anything in terms of other people's comments, but I felt that it was really important just to note, and I don't think it's an editorialization. I think it's a provision of information to include the information about geographically isolated. And other than that, I don't see anything that is editorialized. Eric Malkowski spoke, I remembered what he said. You might not have been able to hear when you were doing the minutes, but I know what he said. So that's, that's basically it.
Reasonable people can agree to disagree.
Yep, that's fine. So is it my understanding that Bill gave us the direction to include people's statements from, was it the August 28th meeting?
It's the 28th, which I'm about to get to.
Fine, so why don't we, because I'm not going to say that we approve these minutes if we're not all on board. So we've been sitting on them for this long, and we're going to sit on it again, that much longer. So because I'm not going to have this where anybody can say that this is not kosher with everybody. So these minutes are going to wait until the next meeting. We're just going to keep pushing it forward till we all agree. Because we're bored, we're going to work together, we're going to hammer this out. So August 24th minutes, we're going to wait until the next meeting. Moving on, August 28th minute. Let's go with that.
Okay. I am just getting them.
Thank you.
All right. These are minutes that were taken at that special meeting. I have spent a bunch of time making sure that all of the names that I was aware of, and I was working from your notes, Beth, my own notes, and some that Russ gave me. And I was not able to track change with this one. So basically, I made a few small changes. And then I did, as Bill instructed me, which was to add all of the emails that were sent to me by, by folks who commented that day. I have comments from Rachel Spangler, Ansha Rupert, Michael Pelton, Al McLean, myself, Emily Goyette, Tyler, Jan Wyman, Tyler Hoteling, Ben Partridge, and Lee Marinoff. So, and I requested, I requested these comments three different times and hoped that everyone would participate. Unfortunately, they didn't. But this, we were following Bill's, Bill's guidelines for getting the comments. And so I would, I would move approval of these minutes with the changes.
Okay, I'll second that. These were Bill's directions, the superintendent. Obviously, in the future, if anybody wants to add something, I guess that's something we can talk about. This is what we have for now, for August 28th. So unless there's any other discussion, Russ?
No, it's just Carolyn admitted she editorialized things. Things that are in the minutes were contributed after the minutes, after the meeting was held. Again, it's an editorialization. There's no denying that. And I just happen to disagree, so.
I'm sorry.
You can pass.
I'm sorry, Russ. No, Carolyn, can you please let me answer this? Because I'm the one that asked for this. We've been going through these minutes for months. We were advised by the superintendent, Bill Anton, who I think we all admire greatly. He said, rather than us trying to go back and document what people said, which the recording was very faulty, he said it was his instruction that people, anyone that was at those meetings, and there's three people in the room that were at that meeting on August 28th, could submit what their sentiment was. That is what we're approving right now. Again, Russ, if you're going to, if you're going to, if you're going to push back on this, then I'm not going to approve these minutes. Because I will not, in any way, shape, or form, have you tell us that we are not doing our job. So if you're going to fight us on this, that's fine. But I'm telling you, this is what the superintendent has told us to do. And every single person that was at that meeting has the right to submit whatever it is they wanted to say in that meeting. But if this isn't good with you, then we're not going to pass these minutes. We haven't passed them since flipping August, so I'm fine with it. So quite frankly, actually, no, I'm sorry, Carolyn, I appreciate all your hard work. But no, we're not approving either of those minutes, we're moving on.
Okay, well, that's extremely disappointing because I put a heck of a lot of work into these.
You have, and it's extremely disappointing that we are questioning the superintendent of schools. Let me make that very clear. I am not happy about that at all. For $750 a year, this is a lot of.
Beth, may I, may I also make a remark?
Sure.
On neither of these did I editorialize, other than adding a note about geographically isolated.
Can't editorialize anybody that submits their own remarks. If any single one of us, if I submit something in writing, those are my comments. It is not editorialized. So Russ, you got to think on this. We're not going to talk about it now, we're going to wait till the next meeting because we have people waiting to talk about the budget. This is an informational meeting. In the meantime, I suggest you think on it. And if you don't believe what I'm saying, you have a conversation with Bill Anton. I'm not going to discuss this further. Moving on to old business. So if we could quickly start, Lori, I'm sorry.
Sure.
With Bridget Blanchard and Crystal Corvieu's concern about the mask mandate, I sent something for Russ and Carolyn that Bill Anton, the superintendent, sent me today regarding COVID-19 advisory memorandum. Galen, can you get this on, whatever? I don't know.
Just hold it still for a second.
Yep.
Can't screen share?
No, she can't.
Whatever, as long as people see that this is a documentation from the superintendent that came through the state. I'm going to have to send it out through Ellen. So I have a memorandum from Bill Anton that comes down through the state regarding COVID-19. Bill is telling us that, and I'm happy, I will send it out through Ellen McDuffie. I sent it to Carolyn and Russ today. Basically, what it's saying, or what Bill is telling us is, we agreed in August to follow the state mandates as far as masking. We can at any time decide not to do that. We have had some concern from parents about wearing masks. So as a board, I am asking Carolyn and Russ to let me know what you think about this. It is my position that it should be up to the parents. I have noted numerous times when we're at the farm where children have their mask on and we're outside. And it breaks my heart. But I'm not their parent. So I can tell them, hey, we're outside, take your mask off. But anyway, I'm not their parent. So this has to be up to the parents. As a board, I feel like we can say, you know what, this is up to the parents. So, and I'd like to try and make a motion to pass that, to leave this up to the parents.
Discussion?
I would like to know that if that memorandum is okayed by the supervisory union. I have not seen it yet. So Beth, is it the guidance that the supervisory union is going to follow?
It's what Bill sent me today and said, yes. It sounds like that's what's happening. That's what they're going to be going towards. Now, it wasn't starting today. It sounds like it's going to be early March. But as Bill said, it's entirely up to the board.
Okay, well, I would second your motion.
Any other?
How many children in school are not vaccinated?
You know, Russ, Mickey's not here, Sarah's not here, it's vacation week, so I don't know that. Crystal, feel free to speak up. Do you have?
I think it's 37%.
It's about 37%. It was my understanding, Russ, in the past, you said that it wasn't really your decision to decide. You felt like it was up to parents. So I'm kind of pushing for parents to, to make that move.
I'm just wondering how many students are in the school that are not vaccinated? Because those, those parents that are not vaccinating their children are putting the other children at risk.
Right now, we're just talking about whether the parents have the decision to regulate whether their kids wear masks or not. Crystal, go ahead, absolutely.
I just want to comment on, you know, I have no ill feelings towards people that decide not to vaccinate. It is a proven fact. COVID is very much less on the children. I wouldn't have had my kids vaccinated if I didn't have a kid that had asthma history. So I don't want the decision based on, oh, you got your kid vaccinated. That also is a decision that should be the parents.
So again, anybody else? Thank you, Crystal, that has a comment. Because right now, what I'm looking at is a motion to allow the parents to make that decision. I'm sorry, Mickey's not here and Sarah's not here. I understand their hard work, they need to have a break. And if something comes back from them, I guess we'll have to revisit it. We can always call for an emergency meeting. But for right now, every parent that's on this meeting, if you have something to say, say it now. Otherwise, we are voting right now to allow the parents to decide if children wear masks in school or not. Is that understood?
Could I say something?
Yes, feel free.
Hi, this is Lee, I don't know if you can hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I really don't think we should be giving out the children's vaccination status at a board meeting. Is that the kind of thing that we should be talking about? Aren't there still HIPAA rules? Don't we still? Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was the first thing. The second thing is, I, what?
I'm sorry, we're not giving out individual, they're just asking for a percentage. But no, we're not giving out individual children's vaccination records.
Good, so we can't go to the school and you don't give us a report on all the children, if they're vaccinated or not vaccinated, correct?
Absolutely not. We can't even mention, in a board meeting, we cannot, I shouldn't even mention my own child's name, who's a student at Leamington Grade, no. There's absolutely no way that that's happening.
Okay, good. Well, I'm here in Michigan right now, and it appears to me that the mask mandates are going to be ending all over the country. Since Vermont has the second lowest of any deaths of adults, not children. We had eight, what, 82 per 100,000? I hope we get the masks off our children. If parents want a mask, I think that's great, and mask their children, that's fine. But we should not be having that at the school. That should be something that comes from the family, especially in our state, where we have such a small chance of anything with COVID. And, and nobody has much of a chance anymore. So I hope that we really act on this tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You see people's hands up?
I see Lee, but she just spoke. I'm sorry, I don't see anybody else's.
Rory's hand is up.
Rory, go ahead. If your hand is up, and I'm, if I don't see it, just feel free to shout out.
Hi, I just have a question. So if is voted that mask is left up to the parents, would that pose any conflict? I don't know if there's any families in there that might end up pulling their children out of the school if they're really uncomfortable with one way or the other, whether the children are going to be masked or unmasked? Is that something that could be an issue for any students?
That's a really good question. And I'm hoping that there's a number of parents, you know, online right now who can answer that. And, and as I said before, it's, it's, what's today, Thursday? So we're not back in school till Wednesday. We can, at any time, as a board, call an emergency meeting. So my hope is that, I would love nothing more than to have Mickey or Sarah here right now. But I completely understand they're taking a break. So for right now, I think we're going to make this decision, yea or nay? And then we will deal with ramifications in the next few days. We will get the superintendent on board again. He's already advised me so far and said, this is our decision. But we will certainly get Mickey and Sarah on board. And then any other parent that missed this meeting, we will be more than happy to be available to listen to what they say. So, but no, that's a really good point. We certainly don't want to have anybody not coming to school because of this. I'd like to think we could all work together.
Beth, Greg Frost has his hand up.
Go ahead, Greg.
Hey, I was just looking for clarification on, when you say the parents are able to choose in this situation, that the parents are going to be able to choose for their kids? Or are you having the parents vote as to whether or not kids are or are not going to wear masks?
Parents are, my, my understanding of this from, from Bill's email, and I've reported this to Carolyn and Russ, the parents would decide for their own student.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, you know, I wasn't 100% sure. And I wasn't sure if you were putting it out as like parents to vote or if it was just a, like, right, if you want your kid to wear a mask, let your child wear a mask.
Yeah, so this, yeah, this is for the parents, the parents to decide if they want their child to wear a mask or not.
Okay.
Was there, oh, sorry, unless I see anybody else. Crystal Corvieu has another comment.
I just want to let you know, even though Mickey and Sarah are here, you can touch base with them next week. I met with both of them a couple of days before vacation and the week before.
Yeah.
And they are both very much on board too.
Okay.
That was reiterated.
That was, no, it's my understanding also, but I need to put this out to everybody. So I appreciate that for sure. But I just want to make sure that we're all, we're all on the same page. And yeah, so that's what we're voting on tonight. Anybody else have something? Okay, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Russ abstains.
Okay. It goes for parents have the ability.
I have to pause the recording, it's been 45 minutes, so hold on one minute, please.
Okay. Where are you seeing this?
It just.
I'm stopping the recording. I want to pause, I want to stop it.
That's okay, no, I'll, she was, she was also along with Crystal, the person that asked.
Yeah, chats are on.
I'm starting the recording again.
All right, Russ, are we all set?
We're all set.
Russ should turn off chat.
Russ, Lori's saying that you should turn off chat.
It never stopped. It never stopped.
I started it again. Okay, I think I've turned off the chat.
Yeah, okay. All right, Bridget Blanchard, Lori thought that maybe you had your hand up and I missed it.
Oh, I did, I was just saying, thank you.
Yeah, no, no, thank you. You and Crystal, you both reached out, and that's what we're here for. So I got, you saw the document, I have a copy here. Oh, Crystal, anyway, so.
Peter Barrett.
Dynamite, all right, Peter.
Thank you. I think at this point, it's necessary to have a roll call vote.
Because we didn't.
Because you have an abstention.
Oh, okay, thank you, I appreciate that, Peter.
That's a procedure thing.
Oh, thank you for, for being on that. So I guess we need a roll call vote. So Carolyn Partridge, as far as.
Aye.
Beth McDonald, aye. Russ Cumming.
You're muted, Russ.
Russ, you're, I'm just doing a roll call as far as the.
Beth, it's Joyce, he left the room, but I believe his vote was to abstain.
I'm, I'm pretty sure I have to hear from Russ, unfortunately. I, I might be wrong, but Lord knows.
What is the issue you're voting on?
Uh, allowing the parents to choose whether or not their children wear a mask. So I need to hear from Russ. We have a roll call vote because he abstained. So I need Russ back in the room.
Okay, give me two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
We'll need to verbally abstain from that vote.
Okay, I abstain from that vote.
All right, Peter, is that, is that good with you? Thank you for the thumbs up. Fantastic, okay, so masks are up to parents. And as, you know, next week, if something comes up, we can always revisit it. There's no worries. The Zoom thing has its benefits. We can jump online at any minute. So thank you very much for everybody who's participated in this discussion. So next on the agenda, old business is the budget. Lori Garland.
Okay, first, for Peter's benefit, there's a call-in user. Peter, do you need them to identify themselves?
Yes, I need everyone's both names. I don't have Lee and so on. If anybody can take that down and send it to me, that'd be good.
Lee is Lee Marinoff, M is in Mary, E R I, N is in
Okay.
E O F F, as in Frank and Frank. And call-in user dash two, if you could identify yourself. Nope, call-in user, I'm sorry, we didn't hear anything there.
David and Pat Cherry.
Oh, okay, thank you, David and Pat Cherry. Did you get that, Peter?
Last name spelling?
Cherry, as in.
Cherry?
Yes. A lovely name.
B A R.
Yes, no, got it, we got it, Mr. Cherry, thank you.
David and Ginny Crittenden.
And David and Ginny Crittenden, great. I think everybody else is. Kathleen, is that Kathleen Scott? Yes, Kathleen's iPad is Kathleen Scott. And I think that should be everybody.
Did he get Gail Wyman?
I think so, her name was up there, sorry, Gail. Our Gail's iPad. Gail Wyman.
Thanks.
Okay, we're good. All right, on to new business now, or on to old business. We have Lori Garland, our chief financial officer, discussing the budget.
Okay, good evening, everybody. You all should have your town reports, I think, by now, that have the budget in, in the town report with also the three-year comparison. Does everybody have that? Okay, so I'll move along. This budget represents fiscal year '23, the proposed spending for the Wyndham School District school. It has, you know, the revenues at the top of the page. We could go over line by line if that's preferable, or I will open it up for questions for the revenues. Which would you prefer, Beth? Want to have questions for the revenues?
I'm going to put this out, yeah. Anybody that's online or here in the room, this, this is your time to talk to our chief financial officer, Lori. So if you have some questions, please feel free to do that. Or if you have some guidance for her, let her know that also.
Okay, not seeing any hands. So we will move on to expenditures. Okay, so expenditures. This is broken, this budget is broken up into basically two sections. One is the pre-kindergarten. And you'll see that we have a slight increase there. This is for the statewide 10, 10 hours per year that Wyndham pays because they don't have a pre-K here, they pay it to other pre-K. So we're estimating about six students there. Um, so we're estimating about six students there. Um, this budget also has an increase of a point five teacher and an increase of a point five admin assistant. So basically, the teacher that is now half time admin assistant and half time teacher is will now be a full time teacher. And a new hire of an admin assistant will be put into play in fiscal year 23. Bridget, did you have a question?
Um, about the kids to, uh, wear masks because that's a federal thing. Go back to that.
Oh, sorry, Bridget, that didn't come through clearly, you want to try again?
Oh, sorry, yeah, um, the kids will, this is back to the mask thing. I'm pretty positive that they will still have to wear masks on the bus because that's a federal law.
Okay, yeah, um, hopefully, everybody's good with that. But let me, I will double check with the superintendent and with the bus driver, Court Scott. Thank you for bringing that up. Hopefully, that's.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes. Put a note over there for you.
Oh, okay.
We need clarification.
Oh, okay, great, thank you. Writing my notes too.
Dynamite, so moving on, you can see that there is, you know, a variance in the par educator line because we moved that up to the teaching line. So everything else is barely a status quo. Um, we did increase some general supplies because there will be an increase of students in the building next year. Um, and then one of the other major differences between fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23 is that the board decided to reduce the music in hopes of having different volunteers or, you know, something of that sort come in to do the music. So that was a reduction of $10,000 right there. Um, PE is basically the same FTE that's coming in. Another fairly large increase is the MTSS, which is the special education and AST budget. That is increasing this year. That comes through the WCSU budget. Uh, and that is a funding change with Act 173. Um, social work is remaining the same at point 10. And school nurse was increased from a point 01, which was basically one time a month, maybe a half a day a month, to a point 10, which is a half a day a week. So that was also increased. Uh, we did increase on the Board of Education for VCTV coming to record these meetings. Um, and and then also the audit services will be going up slightly next year. Uh, so then when you're in the principal's office, you can see where the added admin assistant at a point 50 that was added to the budget. Um, a slight increase in technology services. And this is technology services is basically a shared cost. This is through the WCSU. Um, it is sharing of all of the different softwares that that are used and then some personnel as well. So the way that works is that Wyndham doesn't have a lot of personnel coming up to Wyndham for technology. Um, they do have some, and they have access to if they need support in technology to reach out to our IT department. Most of that increase is really in the software that has increased over the last couple of years. Um, and then operation of buildings. Okay, there was some, we added some HVAC maintenance there. And, oh, yeah, the telephone what is going up because it's not supported by the USAC or E rate program any longer. Uh, let's see here. The transportation, we did increase that based on the hours projected. That was budgeted a little low the last couple of years and increased to the hourly basis to bring it more in line with the costs that we're seeing across the other districts. Increase in repairs and maintenance for the bus. Uh, the bus is getting older and we can talk about the capital plan for that. There is some money, very little money right now in the capital plan for the bus, but there is a $5,000 fund for that. And then the promissory note is also in there as it normally is. That's the lighting retrofit. The loan that was taken out to, um, pay for a deficit at one time, it was two years ago now, that has been paid off as of two months ago. The board decided to pay it early, so that is paid off.
Nice.
So then under fund transfer is $10,000, which was for $5,000 to go into the bus fund and then $5,000 for building maintenance. So the grand total is $46,000 over last year's budget or up just almost 12%. So how does that play into your taxes? So there is a significant increase in taxes this year. Um, and that's going to be on your three year comparison. Zoom in there, that's the page that should be in your annual report. Got it? Okay. And this just basically walks down the the tax calculation. Um, the base calculation is a dollar eighty, sorry, a dollar, or no, the dollar ninety eight is what the tax rate is. That or proposed tax rate will be. That is an increase of 34 cents or 20, almost 21%. So I just want to talk a little bit right now. Actually, let me answer, Russ, did you want to ask the question before I talk more about the tax rate?
Ask a question. No, we were going to have a question about the food service plan being eliminated, but we understand why.
Well, I don't understand why. I know that the parents requested a food service program. And I know that it's not in the current budget. It's simply covering the past expenses. So for my own edification, why isn't the parents' request for a food service program included in the budget?
Do you want me to answer that? Um, thank you, Joyce, it's something that we're working on. Um, I'm grateful that Greg Frost is online. Uh, Bridget Corby has looking been looking into this and we actually have a meeting set up next week. Uh, we can't willy nilly just go into a food service program without understanding what we truly need to have here. We've been given some pretty big ticket items as far as what some people think we need, but we're wondering if it's actually what we need. And Bridget Corby's done an amazing job, as have many of the other parents who've been working with her on this with Hunger Free Vermont. So we are taking this in small steps. Uh, we have a meeting on Zoom, which perhaps if that's something you want to be involved with, we can send you that link. Uh, da, Greg, I believe it's next Wednesday at 2 o'clock uh, with Hunger Free Vermont and the staff at Leland and Gray. So we are working on this, but it's going to take some time.
So quick question, Beth, the meeting on Wednesday will be after the town meeting vote, yes?
Yeah, town town meeting's Tuesday, so yeah.
So regardless of what happens at that meeting, the vote is it's already a done deal.
Um, I guess it depends on how the vote goes, Joyce. I'm not really sure how to answer that question. Uh, we're just, um, myself personally, as a board member, I'm just I'm just moving forward. So I, yeah, I guess Tuesday is going to say a lot. As it will for the boiler. So there's a number of things that are in the works, but you know, we we just keep looking forward until until what happens, happens.
And if I can just add on to that, Beth, the board can make a decision later in the process to overspend the budget. They do have fund balance and they can use that for, you know, moving forward with some sort of program. At this point right now, with the increase in the tax rate, which I'll talk about a little in a little bit here, uh, the board decided to pull that out until they knew, as Beth said, what type of program they really need. It was very expensive, um, before, you know, coming from WRED. So Bridget's done an amazing job. Uh, we'll hear more about that.
Yeah, we're going to talk, as I said, Greg, set up a meeting. Greg Frost, our, um, the director of, uh, building and maintenance. So we have that to look forward to and and we're hoping that there are some funds out there and grants to help us. So. Was there anything else or can Lori go on? Were there any other hands? It looks like Pat McLean. Pat McLean and Bill Dunkeld and Abby Pelton, does that sound fair?
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Um, my question is, is there a requirement in the state of Vermont that the school provide lunches and breakfast to children?
The Carolyn can jump in on this one too, but there is a requirement to opt in or opt out of the National School Lunch Program. So Wyndham has chosen in the past to opt out of the that program because of lack of facilities to provide it.
Uh, along with lack of facilities, it's it's there's a big part that's been lack of interest. Um, and I'm speaking strictly as for myself, as a parent who I put three children through this school. When it came up, when I was a parent here, the options were Cisco. And I'm sorry, I wasn't interested. So I was happy, just I just, that's not what I was comfortable with. Um, and so it's it's there's a number of factors that go into it. I'm just going to go over to you, Gail, because I'm running out of power here. Go ahead, like, Bill Dunkeld, unless Pat McLean, you had anything else? It looks like Bill Dunkeld's out.
Beth, Beth, could I make a comment in answer to Pat's?
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks. Um, so no, it is not mandated. And because it's not mandated, it's also something we could potentially fundraise for. Uh, I really want to thank Bridget Corby for her work. And I've been in touch with Fay Mac, who works for Hunger Free Vermont. So we're trying to, um, work out a way to get meals there. And I'm willing to help, even though I will not be on the school board after this meeting. So I think Abby Pelton may also have an announcement that would is kind of exciting. And I don't know if that's what she's about to say, but in answer to your question, no, it is not required. But we do opt out.
Uh, Bill Dunkeld.
Uh, Lori, I'm looking at the three year comparison that you referred to on page 35 and that in the town report. And it I'm looking just below line 38 and it says West River Unified Proposed Unified Tax Rate, a dollar eighty, is that dollar eighty five or a dollar eighty six, dollar eighty five, I guess?
Yes.
Now, what's the but that what's the final tax rate that you cited?
A dollar ninety eight. So Wyndham pays part of WRED's tax rate, unified tax rate because you're part of the union school. So you can see the percentages there.
Yeah.
Thirty seven point seven nine percent is Wyndham students. Um, and the other percentages are what you are paying on West River. So that's the calculation.
So where where is the dollar ninety eight shown? It's not on here anywhere?
Uh, combined tax rate, keep keep reading down.
Yeah.
It's not there, should be, got cut off in your town report.
Should be at the very bottom.
Yeah.
Well, I see combined tax rate, but it says a dollar, looks like 1.083.
I think that in the town report, it was hard to very, very hard to read. Yeah, it's it's a dollar ninety eight.
So does that, is that a mistake in the in the report then?
Uh, no, it's what I I have what I sent to the, um, to the auditors to print in front of me. I printed it off the email that I sent to them.
I mean, I'm not I'm not doubting it's a dollar ninety eight. I just don't see a dollar ninety eight written down anywhere on page 35.
It sounds like the town report, there was some sort of a mishap there, Bill. Because Lori's saying it's 1.983. So yes, 1.983, um, thank you for pointing that out. Um, is there anybody, uh, from the auditors committee that might be on? Otherwise, yeah, that's that's giving it.
Uh, yeah, I'm I'm one of the auditors and this, these two pages are very, very hard to read, the three pages. And we did the best we could to make it as clear as possible. Um, and it it isn't as clear as I would like. Um, and I don't know in the future if we can do something to have the tables prepared in a different format so that we can increase the size of the font. But that would be preferable.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, thank you. Um, I'm looking at this page here that Lori provided and it's and it's very clear. So obviously, something, there's just a mishap and we'll have to work on that. But just to be clear, people can share this around and I can, I can maybe repost it through Ellen McDuffie. She sends out email last, so that it is indeed 1.983. So thank you, Pat, for that.
Beth, could I ask a related question, please?
Absolutely.
So just to just to, well, just to clarify, the combined tax rate number at the very bottom, which is 1.083, should be 1.983?
Yes.
Okay, and what was the rate last year, the the find the combined rate last year?
The combined rate last year was a dollar sixty four. And so that's why I was saying it's 34 cents increase or 21%. Um, I will tell you that 29 cents of that 34 cents is due to your CLA dropping. So your CLA last year was 97.83%. CLA is the common level of appraisal.
Right.
And this year it is 83.75. So that was a major drop and that is what is driving up the tax rate. Um, you know, had your CLA stayed exactly the same, the tax rate, the combined tax rate would be a dollar sixty or a dollar seventy.
Okay, understood. I'm just last comment for for future reference. I think it would be helpful if there if this three year comparison showed the tax rate for the previous year. Because I don't see a dollar sixty four on there for the previous year's tax rate. And it would just be useful, it seems to me, to be able to compare them.
Yeah, thanks for the the feedback, Bill. Um, I, this is a state, um, it's basically a state mandated document that has to go in your town report and it's definitely lacking. Uh, but I will, I will take that into consideration, that and changing font sizes if I I can change font sizes. So I may be able to add a column on either side of this for previous year as well. Um, so I will, I will do that for next year.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Bill, those are all really great questions and observation. I'm sorry, Lori, just so last year's, oh, I see it right here. So last year's CLA was, I see, 97.83.
Yes.
Okay, and now we're at 83.75. Okay, great, thank you. So this page you have here is beautiful to me, but anyway, but yeah, it sounds like we can make improvements for the town report for next year.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, happy to to do that.
Thank you. Um, I think Abby Pelton was waiting. And then I see, I'm trying to look, Mr. Widger, Phil. And then I see, I'm trying to look, uh, Mr. Widger, um, Phil, did you have another question or, and Pat McLean, or your hand's just still up?
I don't have another question. I'll take my hand off.
No, no, I figured. So Abby Pelton and then, uh, Tom Widger.
Thank you, Beth. Um, hope everyone's having a good night tonight. Um, I'm very excited about a lot of hard work that's been going into, um, really trying to figure out how to support families in our community. And, um, so I'm happy to share that our town now has an organization called The Friends of the Wyndham Schoolhouse. Uh, it is a five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit organization that we will be able to apply for grants. Uh, we'll be able to fundraise much more easily. So this is gonna be incredibly supportive to the parents group. Um, and is completely inclusive. So this is regarding the education of our children. This is for private school. This is for homeschool kids and allowing a venue in our community, um, that is all volunteer uh, to provide supports, uh, to our community members. Um, so I'm really excited about that part. Um, we can really go big and dream big. So when we were talking about the budget and, um, you know, what size kitchen and whatnot, uh, it can, this nonprofit is able to collaborate with other nonprofits. Um, so all that wonderful work that Bridget Corby has done, um, maybe that's something that can help ease the heavy lift, uh, in creating funds and opportunity for our community. Um, and I just wanted to also point out a concern that families have kind of reported is sports. Um, I believe Tess Pollard is on the call tonight, and I hope at some point she gets to speak a little bit to soccer that she's got planned coming up for the spring and how we can figure out interest for that. So thank you so much. And, um, really look forward to anyone, anyone, no matter where you stand on any side of any issue. If you have a concern, this nonprofit is designed to be supportive of our families. Um, and that we're gonna be having a meeting probably this Saturday. Um, if I had the option and we had a chat, I could share the, you know, a lot of information in that, but unfortunately, we still haven't figured out how to allow that. I will continue to work on that with Bill. Um, but it, there is an email, uh, the, uh, no, friends dot of dot the dot Wyndham dot schoolhouse at gmail dot com. So if anyone has any interest whatsoever in, um, finding out more about it, participating, um, please make sure to email that account and, uh, disclose obviously who you are, if you got a weird email like I do. Um, and people will be reaching out, and this is a really, really wonderful thing. I'm super excited. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Abby. Just real quick, can you just say that email one more time, like really slowly?
So it's, it's, it's friends of the Wyndham Schoolhouse, but there has to be periods in between each word, cause you can't use spaces.
Okay.
At gmail.
Schoolhouse at gmail. Okay. Dynamite. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Tom Widger, and then it looks like Russ has a question. Tom Widger, you're up.
Hi, how, how are you? Um, I have two questions. Um, if you don't own a home in Wyndham, if you're, uh, like from Massachusetts, what is the tax rate?
Oh, the non, the non, um, yeah, I don't have that on here, the non-homestead tax rate.
Right.
So that is not, um, calculated at this point. I think that's not calculated actually until, um, the final budget collection is come in.
Okay.
Each town is a little bit different for that. Um, hold on one second. I can probably get an estimate. But it, it ends up being, and a good place to find this information, it'll be for previous years, is on the, um, Vermont Department of Taxes, property taxes. And it gives you, um, the homestead and the non-homestead rate for every, um, year back, gosh, ten years.
Yeah, I, I, I did look at that, and it was basically one sixty-five or so.
Yeah.
And we're, we're doing a tax that is one ninety-eight. Um, so the person next door to me, who owns the same house I have, that doesn't live here, is gonna be paying twelve hundred dollars less than I am.
That is, that is correct. That is the way in most towns that that happens, if not all.
Most towns is either less or even. I just wanna throw that out there. That's, that's fine. I mean.
Wait, Tom, I'm sorry. You're saying most towns, it's either less or even, and you're saying that this is standard throughout the state?
Well, at least for RSU.
For our supervisor union. Okay. So while we're on this topic, cause this, this is really important to me, and this is something that, you know, for all of you who knew Ernie Freely, this was one of his biggest issues. There is a serious flaw in our funding system. There are five points to the funding system, of which we have control over. Wyndham pays a lot of money for a lot of students throughout the state. So what I would ask is, but this is, this is something that we need to address more clearly. Okay? Before, before we penalize our children, I just, I really wish people would look into this funding system. Um, because it is, it's, it's kind of bizarre. It's really bizarre. Anybody else? If there's anybody that disagrees with me, please feel free to raise your hand. Anybody?
I'm sorry. I just want to bring, I just wanted to bring that up because the people next door have the house, same house we have, valued at the same price. And in my estimation, they're gonna be paying twelve hundred dollars less than I am.
I know. No, it's, it's a great, I'm glad you brought it up. It's really important. And this is something that we have to try and figure out, I think, as a community. So no, don't be sorry. I'm, I'm really glad you brought it up. This is something that's bothered me for years. Um, and I don't know how to go about fixing it. I really don't. So no, I appreciate that you, you have it on your, on your mind.
As a listener, as a listener, can I help explain answers to these questions?
Uh, yeah, sorry, Russ. I just wanna make sure Tom Widger was, uh, finished.
Uh, I'm just saying, um, we're not rich. We just work really hard. I mean, it's, it's just, doesn't, it blows my mind why, why we were paying twelve hundred dollars more than our neighbor who was using it as an Airbnb.
Yeah, no, believe me, I'm, I'm, I'm in the same boat. I'm, I'm not rich by any means, but, um, and it's been, and I don't think it's always been this way. Where, where local people, so this is, yeah, this is a conundrum. Um, Tom, if you're all set, it sounds like Russ has something to add.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
The, the issue with the school tax is the, the biggest impact on the school tax is the number of children that are in the school. And if you had forty students in the Wyndham Elementary School with the same budget, the tax rate would go down by fifty percent. So the key element with the education tax is the cost to educate each student in the town. And the homestead taxpayers, the people who live here full-time and who are homesteaders, they pay the education tax for their local school. The non-residents, the, the, the non-residents who are vacation homeowners, the base rate is basically a dollar fifty. And that is then impacted by the C L A, and that money then goes to the state and is returned to the town as credits for people who earn lower amounts of income than a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars as a credit on their tax return. But the key element that keeps the education cost high in Wyndham, and why we don't include art and music and foreign languages and meals, is that the budget would go up and the tax rate would skyrocket.
Okay, uh, thank you. Were there any other hands or, I'm sorry, just really quickly, cause I just saw Greg Frost. And don't say you weren't just there, Greg, but seriously, you had a small baby in your arms. Could you just please, just give us all something really good to look at? Is that Rosalie?
Beth, 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 quick question. It's Joyce. Um, I wanna get back, I, um, wanted to applaud Abigail Pelton for her efforts in terms of, um, establishing the Friends of the Schoolhouse. I, I would like to get the five-oh-one-C-three number so that I can contribute to it.
Thank you. Um, uh, Greg, don't go anywhere. Abby, can you, um, help us coming out with that, please?
Yes, Joyce, don't you worry. Uh, we are, um, we still have to set up the bank account, but it is filed with the Secretary of State, and we do have a tax I D number. So as soon as all of, uh, the dots finalize getting dotted, which I believe is very important to have a collaborative effort on, um, and making sure that this organization remains inclusive. Um, but yes, don't you worry, there's gonna be plenty of stuff in the pipeline for people to donate, and that would hopefully bring in some funds outside of our community, uh, to help support us. So thank you very much, Joyce.
Thank you. Abby, maybe if you're, when you're ready, um, or when the, the organization's ready, again, to put, put that out to Ella McDuffie. It's really the whole town or Vance Bell to have it put on the website. That's something we can do. Um, so wait, did we just, did Rosalie just go to bed? Cause that's really a bummer. Fine, whatever.
Yeah, sorry. It, it was time. I'm sorry.
That's fine. Next time, Greg. Um, great. So thank you to Tom and Russ. Were there any other questions, uh, for Lori? Cause we have her here, so. Who?
Tom still has his hand up.
Tom, you have your hand up still. Is that, did you have another question? Okay, I'm gonna go now. Uh, anybody else have questions for Lori Garland, our Chief Financial Officer?
So Lori.
Oh, it sounds like Aaron Kea has a question.
So in this proposed budget, there's none of the, um, requested items that some of the parents want to go. So no, no foreign language, no art budget.
Correct, correct.
Um, no, I mean, there is the school nurse that he did want.
That was increased, yes.
No other, um, extra things, but we're relying on a lot of volunteer work.
Um, the other thing that was requested was for Sarah to be a full-time teacher.
Yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry, we did talk about that.
The half-time, um, administrative assistant is also.
Mm-hmm. So we got an extra half, a part-time person, and then Sarah was moved up to a full-time person to take the workload off her. Cause I do agree she's doing too much.
Right. So that was the other thing that the parents, um, had talked about and was added.
Okay. So, so everything, music, so all of this is volunteer, just for, you know, for, for the budgetary purpose, so.
For the budgetary purpose, um, music and art are not in this. That's correct. Okay.
And so, but then it's increased because mostly from the part-time person, increased, uh, health insurance and increase of technology are our major, are our major areas. Oh, and the bus and the transportation.
And the, um, also, uh, another request that was made was, um, the transfer to capital.
Yes.
Right? That was a, I think that was requested at twenty thousand, but they did, uh, the board did decrease it to ten um, in order to keep the tax rate under the two-dollar mark.
Okay. Okay. So, I mean, in, in, in the end, I mean, not that I'm not happy with those increases for, um, things, but at the end of the day, besides that part-time employee for administration, um, and the nurse, so there's nothing else, um, physical or, you know, something for the kids, whether it's a, it's more improvements to buildings or if it's like, or transportation, just.
Yeah, this is the budget that the, the board approved.
Uh, transportation, uh, what was the other transportation?
It went, went up to sixteen thousand instead of eight thousand. Um, under the transportation costs.
Yeah, the, um, you're talking about for twelve thousand.
I'm sorry, twelve thousand. Yes, I have to guess remember from.
Right. So that was based on hours that were projected, and, and that's where I was saying that in previous years, it was probably underbudgeted for the amount of hours that it takes. Also, um, was a rate adjustment to, um, be more in line with what we pay other, um, transportation providers in RSU. And then a little bit more in, um, maintenance because of the age of us.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Did you have anything else, Aaron?
No, I think that's it for this moment.
Great. Um, we, so speaking of transportation, one of the questions I had regarding the operational, non-operational budget, um, which you had sent us some information, um, just to be clear, and, and people at the last meeting, well, you weren't here, Galen, Peter was here, but anyway, um, the non-operational budget was a few cents higher, and I had a question as to whether that included transportation. It did indeed include transportation, but to be clear, that's to, that's the way we're going right now to Townsend.
Uh, correct. So the transportation assumption that was made for the non-operational budget
Yeah.
was basically what you're paying now, you know? And it could go to a number of different directions. I don't know, but it's, it was the same, not knowing
Okay.
anything more. The assumption was, is it's the same as now.
I only, I just wanna make that distinction because it's, there's, I, I think there are some people who want their, maybe want their kids to go to Townsend, but there's some kids who wanna go to Floodbrook, and I just want to be clear that, I don't know that that, does that support both those directions?
Without doing an analysis, and you know, maybe Greg could jump in and, and talk about that, but without doing an analysis to see, you know, if you're not going to the far end of Wyndham, you know what I'm saying, to pick up kids, I don't know what that is. So,
Okay.
you know, we had to make some assumptions, and we just used the same figures as what's happening now.
And I just wanna be clear that right now, we're, my understanding is we're still part of the supervising union for, you know, downhill, but this way, and I just, I don't want anybody to have any notions that.
So with the assumptions, because you brought up the, for the non-operational budget, cause I was on the operational budget.
Yeah.
Um, the question last time was with the assumptions for the, it was four cents difference for a non-operational budget.
Mm-hmm.
That was with the previous assumptions that we put in before. So that, did that have, uh, I'm trying to go back a couple of months now, that was the nurse, uh, well, actually, that was not. That, that was the, that was the transportation. And did that have the five, I'm sorry, that was my question, like five phantom students that were in those assumptions?
Um, that was not added in.
That was not.
That would have been an additional amount of money. And I, I don't know if you remember the document, but it had a consideration column. It had different, um, costs to it. So the base non-operational is what I based that tax rate off of that I was, that, um, Carolyn requested.
That was my, we didn't know if it was added any other.
No.
It was in there.
No.
Okay, um, anybody else? Uh, it looks like Pat McLean, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I had another quick question. Um, in terms of the number of students, um, that we have, uh, for the elementary school, we have sixteen this year and seventeen to eighteen for the next year. How about the seventh through twelfth graders? Um, how many students, um, do we have enrolled in seventh to twelfth grade for this year and next year?
Um, that number, I believe, is nine. You don't have any third, fourth, and fifth going to the high school next year, or you don't have any fifth graders.
Okay, so it's gonna be nine next year and this year?
What's that?
It'll be nine this year and next year.
Roughly, yes. I don't, I don't have that exact number in front of me, but I can get it for you if you need, if you would like it right now, but it's around that.
Okay.
It goes to a different spreadsheet.
And what, what are the, in terms of looking at the, the costs, do we, what is the cost for the seventh to twelfth graders to the town?
Right. So that's, um, it's always a question, and it, it really comes through on your cash flow statement, um, which Kathy Scott knows all about. Um, and it's, uh, you know, what you're paying is that, um, the dollar eighty-five unified rate times. the $1.85 unified rate times the, hold on one second, right spot. Okay, which is 62.21%. I'm sorry, that's for the elementary. The secondary is the 37.39. Or 79. That percentage of the $1.85 is what you're paying. So it's that tax rate, which is 83 cents. No, sorry. Yeah, 83 with the CLA that you're paying on your grand list, right? So I don't know what your grand list is, so I can't tell you what that is or, you know, as far as dollar amount is.
Okay. Did we lose?
Did you have anything else, Pat?
No, thanks. I just lost my screen, so.
Okay. Well, feel free to email at any time. I had Lori on speed dial, so.
I think it was right around, and Kathy, maybe you remember off the top of your head, but was it like 175,000? Or the high school that you sent to classroom or secondary?
No, no, it doesn't have anything.
I don't, yeah.
Okay.
Pat, we can look into that further and.
I can tell you what it is this year, Pat. I can send you that information.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I just can't, I can't tell you what it is for next year yet without knowing what the list is.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Pat. Are there any other questions for Lori?
You know, when I sent you today, the, which, I'm, you know, I'm sorry, not everybody on the call has, we can upload it to, blast it out to Ellen.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So I also sent the board this afternoon just a quick snapshot, a year-to-date of where Wyndham School is this year, year-to-date. And Beth will send it out through Ellen. But basically, running right along with budget, which is great. Probably revenues are a little low right now, but there's some more revenues to come in. So prediction-wise, we're looking at probably around a surplus of 22,000. But of course, the boiler is going to get done. So that will eat up all of that. Greg probably has a total he could shout out for the boiler.
27,300.
Okay. So any surplus that is looking at, that you'd be looking forward to at the end of the year will probably be absorbed by the boiler. But, you know, that's actually not bad news because you're not at a deficit situation right now, and you'd be going further into a deficit situation. So, so that actually is pretty good news. So that's where you're at for this year. As far as fund balances are concerned, and again, this is all just year-to-date information, and subjects change with more expenditures or more revenue coming in. The general fund has $93,000. There is still some money in the REAP, the Rural Education Fund that Wyndham, actually, and this is a fun fact, Carolyn will appreciate this. Wyndham is the second-largest recipient of REAP awards in the state of Vermont. There's a school that's smaller and more rural than Wyndham, and they get about 20,000. Wyndham gets about 17,000.
You know what, what would be helpful? It's not talking in the acronyms, but in words.
Right.
We are not educators.
Rural Education Grant is what I, REAP is Rural Education Grant. General Fund, that's the General Fund, your voted, your tax-voted fund. And then the Capital Fund has $5,067.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing would be nice if we could have read the budget in the town report.
Even with a magnifying glass.
Even with a magnifying glass. We're old.
So what, I'm sorry, what was the issue with budget?
We couldn't read it. It's old. It's minuscule.
It was shrunk down a little too much.
A little too much?
I was being nice.
Was it, was it just the school report? Or was it, is that just throughout the town report?
No, it was a school report. You could not read it.
Okay, so we need.
Budget when you can't read it.
Clarifying question to Pat. Who, who does your printing for the town report?
Because you, you're just sending a document.
I'm sending the PDF document.
Just as I'm sending a document for my school board report. We're sending documents. So that's really a conversation we need to have within the town with the group that I know works incredibly hard to put this town report together.
Yeah.
But I'm not going to put that on Lori right now because Lori has bigger fish to fry, so. And we only have her for a few more minutes, is my understanding.
Okay.
So thank you, though. That's a really good point. But that's something we need to bring up, I think, to the select board meeting would be the ideal. You know what? Call Corin Scott. I think he should be on it.
Beth, 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 real quick comment. I believe that the auditors, I believe that Ime specifies the font and the type of all of the reports that are included or to be included in the town report. She specifies the type and the font because I know for the listeners, Russ had to use a certain font, a certain type. So maybe if we could simply ask the WCSU to adhere to the same standards as everyone else, it might satisfy what your request. And I, I agree with them. I mean, Tom couldn't.
Read it.
Tom couldn't read it. Eileen couldn't read it.
It's difficult.
It's difficult, yes. And my vision is not bad, but even I had problems with it, so I agree. And you're young.
That's good to know. I didn't, when I turned in my director's report, I didn't have any requests for a font, but that's good to know, and we will plan ahead for next, next year.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Is there anything else for Lori?
Beth, Russ has a comment.
Okay.
Lori, under your report, funds to be spent, which was the, the first page on the download that I had.
Yes.
You had Esser 2 at $13,932.
Correct.
What kind of expenses or expenditures can come under that category? And could you also speak to the ARP Esser funds of approximately 11,000? And the REAP fiscal year '23, 17,000? What kind of expenses could be considered for those funds?
Sure. And again, Lori, I'm sorry for interrupting, but before you speak to it, would you please identify the, you know?
What they are.
Yeah, the graphics here in terms of Esser. For those of us who don't understand, Esser and REAP and ARP Esser. Please, thank you.
Happy to. So Esser was some of the money that came because of the coronavirus for relief funds. It stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. There were three Essers. Esser 1, which was, and has been all spent out. Esser 2, which is what's listed here. And then ARP Esser was the American Recovery Plan, I believe it was called, was the third Esser. So Wyndham's portion of those is what is listed in this document. And those can be used for, basically, anything that Title I, Title II-A, or Title IV can be used for recovery, student, student learning recovery. They're, they're pretty open. I will tell you that it is very hard to do any type of maintenance or any type of capital purchases with it. Not impossible, but it is, there's a different way that we can do things, use the money. And that's why it says plan is forthcoming. Mickey and our grants coordinator Liz and I have a meeting next week to discuss how to integrate these funds in the best way possible. And the REAP is something that we get every year. And if you give me a second, I will try to find the proper.
We need to stop the recording at 7:30. Hello, everyone. I need to stop the recording at 7:30 because it's been another 45 minutes. And then I'm going to start it again, so bear with me, please. Have to wait 30 seconds to start it again. Okay, we're recording again.
Great. Thank you, Russ.
REAP stands for Rural Education Achievement Program. And same thing, REAP can be spent on the same types of things as Title I, Title II-A, and Title IV. Title I being academic support. And I'm generalizing here. Title II-A is professional development. And Title IV is safe and healthy schools or students. So those are the three categories that REAP can be spent on.
Okay. Excuse me. Anybody else?
Beth?
Yeah.
I'd just like to say a brief word about the, about the size of the font. And I know, I don't know what size Lori sends out, but the auditors require Times Roman, Times New Roman, and in 12 font. Pat McLean is an auditor, and she's here. And it may be that the auditors, maybe she can answer this. The auditors sometimes shrink things to make them fit. And I agree with Eileen that, you know, you need to make this, maybe you take an additional page, but you need to make it legible for people to see.
Absolutely. I'm sorry. Can we, can we just put this off to another meeting right now?
The other thing I would like to say, the other thing I would like to say is that I'd appreciate it if people would mute themselves when they're not speaking.
Okay. I'm just, I'm having a real tickle in my throat, and I think I'm freaking out Gail and next to me. So if we could just put off any more talk about the font until next meeting, I, I mean, no disrespect, but I'm literally, I'm not sure how much more I have in me. So I just want to know that if anybody has a question for Lori, she's here right now. So any other questions for Lori?
Nope. I just, thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you very much for that. I'm fully vaccinated, just to remind you. I have this weird tickle right now. Okay, so any other questions for Lori? If not, we're going to let Lori go because Lori's amazing, and we're going to let her go. Okay.
Michael's hand is up.
I see it. Michael Pelton.
I'm not sure if my question will involve Lori or not, but my question is to Russ. Russ, you chose to vote no when the budget was voted on. And I'm wondering if you could elaborate to the community why you made that choice.
I, I voted no because when I looked at the numbers, if we were to have school choice, which is something that I think is viable, it would cost two cents more in the tax rate than would the operational budget that we have now. Lori had prepared a budget for non-operational and operational, and there's a two cents difference in the cost between the operational and the non-operational. Under the non-operational, we get school lunches. We get a school nurse. We get foreign language. We get a lot of things that we're not getting under the budget that we have, we are currently operating under. And that's why I voted no, is for two cents, I'm willing to spend another two cents to get a much better education for our kids.
My follow-up question is, if that is your feeling, would it not be more appropriate to propose a higher tax-rated budget to include more opportunity?
That's what I tried to do, but the other board members voted art out. They voted music out. They voted the school lunch program out. They voted the school nurse, and they voted a lot of things out to keep the tax rate down. And I'm only one of three. I'm, I'm looking for, out for the best interest of the children of Wyndham. If it costs me a little bit more money, I'm willing to spend it to give them a better opportunity at getting a better education over a longer period of time. And I apparently appear to be in a minority on the school board.
Oh, no, Russ, I'm all for it. I'd be happy to pay more. I'm sorry, that wasn't the inclination I got from you from the start. So I don't really think that's what we were up against at all, but obviously, I would love nothing more than to give the students and the parents everything that they want. So let me make that clear. So you have on PCT, TV, Peter Barris, you have that recorded. I would love to give the students nothing more than everything they want. And I'm really glad you said that because I guess maybe we need to go back and revisit the budget. But that certainly wasn't my understanding before when I heard that people were going to vote for this budget because it was too high. So I find that really interesting. Go ahead, Russ. Do you have your hand up?
It's not, it's Joyce. I'm sorry, Beth, but I'm curious. You seem to be in agreement with Russ about what's best for the schoolchildren. So why did you vote against him in terms of?
Removing things.
Removing things from the budget because there was a proposal to include all of these things, and you voted against it for a lower budget. And now you're saying you'd like to see them. I'd like to see them. Parents would like to see them. I'm just confused. I'm sorry.
I've been on this board for 14 years. I have listened time and time again that this school is too small, that we don't have enough students, that if we had more students, our tax rate would be lower. Goodbye, Lori. And now, all of a sudden, everybody wants to put money to the school. That's fantastic. I am completely on board. But do not in any way, shape, or form think that I do not have this, these families, these children, this school's best interest at heart. I'm not voting against the school. I'm just trying to keep the bloody kids in this town and this school open. So I find it really interesting that a couple nights before we have town meeting, that now, all of a sudden, Russ Cummings is willing to pony up the money to pay for our kids and what's best for them. I find that really hard to take. I got to be honest with you. This is really starting to freak me out. So, anybody else have a question? Russ?
I'm not done yet, Beth. Point of clarification, it was not Russ ponying up. It was me, okay? So don't put it on Russ.
Here, I flipped into Russ saying how this school is not viable. This school, we don't have enough kids. No, Joyce, I'm sorry, because I've been working with Russ for a couple of years now. And I've listened to how, his low opinion of this school. And so now, all of a sudden, I'm, I'm the bad guy for not adding more to the budget? I find.
No one said you were the bad guy. No one ever said you were the bad guy. I simply asked, I simply asked a question.
Oh, my God.
Clarification, and you went off. And I'm sorry. I didn't mean to trigger you. I'm sorry. I didn't know it was going to trigger you. I simply asked.
All right, Lori, I see her online. Joyce, I got to be honest with you. I'm going to, I'm going to move on to Lori, but this.
Actually, Beth, I've had my hand up. My hand was up before Joyce's was. I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Carolyn, and then Rory's up.
So some choices were, some tough, tough choices were made. Um, and and indeed, the the difference between the tax rates is four cents, not that we're, you know, but who's counting. Um, and I would say that we made some choices about art and music because we do have some really wonderful volunteers who come, who are actually former teachers. And there are opportunities that our kids have. We even have uh some volunteers who come and teach uh I believe it's French and Chinese. So the kids have really wonderful opportunities, both with music, they're playing ukulele, they're playing uh recorders. And and I'm just gonna share something with you as well, and that is that years ago um, we had a hired art teacher, formal art teacher, who was part of the WCSU. And we got complaints uh from the teacher, from Mickey, because the kids uh would go to art class, and they were bored. They hated it. And so, and we were spending, you know, eighty-five hundred, ten thousand dollars on the art teacher. I can't remember what the number was, it doesn't matter. But it was a lot of money, and and kids would say, yeah, can I go back to the classroom? We don't want to participate. And we felt that that was money that was not being well-spent. So we decided to do something different. And um people came in, I was one of them. I taught weaving to the kids, I taught spinning. Um, I caught Todd felting, we had other folks coming in and doing painting. We had Roberta Stradling, who is an artist, who was a former principal, come to the school and teach painting and drawing. And we've had, now we've had ceramics, and we have opportunities that you don't necessarily get at other schools. Um, the kids are also doing blacksmithing and um sewing and things like that. So we made some choices. Just because you're going to, you know, you have somebody who's a qualified teacher doesn't mean that they're a good teacher, or that they're an engaging teacher. And that, so we made some tough decisions. Um, I'm going to be working with Bridget Corby and uh working with this fundraising thing. We can work on getting a lunch program. We did include a nurse. And um, and one of the things that was really wanted was for uh Bridget Corb- uh for um us, Bridget Corby especially wanted this. The um, we wanted Sarah to be a full-time teacher and to hire an administrative assistant. So all of those things were included. Um, so I'm, I, you know, I disagree, and I also think that the kids have programs at our school that they're, that they could not get going to other schools. Um, the farm school is wonderful, and um, you know, we focus in my committee here in Montpelier on uh ag literacy and uh, you know, making sure the kids are um are educated about where their food comes from and things like that. So um we made some tough decisions, but we produced a budget that I think is responsible, that gives kids, give, yes, volunteers. And by the way, at Floodbrook, and if you, you know, look at the letter, that's the end of my, at the end of my August twenty-fourth uh minutes proposal, you'll see my letter, and you'll see all of the things that um are or are not offered at Floodbrook that are done with volunteer work. They rely on a lot of volunteers. Uh, and the chess club, the painting club don't exist unless there are parents or teachers that are interested. And and that's just the way it is. So I would push back on the notion that we didn't get a whole lot in this budget. I think we got a ton in the budget. I think it's cheaper than um a non-operational school, and that non-operational budget does not include any extra transportation that might be needed. Now, I know we can coordinate with um with other schools and other school buses. Uh however, that's not gonna be free. And um, and it's, you know, parents might end up having to transport their kids. Additionally, we get over eleven thousand dollars. I think I saw in the budget this year, it's eleven thousand two hundred dollars in revenue by the, because we transport our kids down to um down to Townsend to Leland and Gray. So if you're, you're thinking about uh not providing transportation to the folks going down toward Townsend, you lose revenue there. So I just want to push back a little bit on this notion that somehow uh we are cheating our kids, they're not getting what they want, and we will be working on a meal program. And uh at some point, we will try and get that. Done.
Thank you, Rory. Um so Rory Ross slots up, and then I see it looks like Kermit Blackwell and then Tess Pollard.
Um, so I I didn't mean to actually get involved in this part of the conversation because I feel at this point saying less is more. Um, but since it came to it, I'm gonna interject on this, and I do feel that Michael Pelton's question was completely valid. I think a lot of us knew where it was going. And I think the response was blatant narcissism. Um, because everybody knows how Russ feels. Um, and I don't think we need to go there. I agree with Carolyn. Um, the volunteer opportunity is wonderful for our younger children because we have a, we have a really great community of artisans. Um, maybe not everybody is aware of that. And um I think that teaching foreign language in elementary school, it may not be something uh I think it's gonna end, it would end up kind of being similar to how you were describing, or Carolyn, I believe it was describing, how the children weren't uh big fans of these teachers that were paid and came in, and uh was it music that you were discussing? I think that our kids just aren't really. Art, sorry. Um I'm not sure if that makes any sense to you guys, but I think that foreign language in elementary school is not top priority.
Oh, thank you, Rory. Um, next we have um Kermit, looks like your hand's up, and then we have Tess Pollard, and then Crystal Corvus, who has, um, she wants to add something.
Yeah, I I wanna follow what Rory was saying, really, but uh just, I I recall here that um there were some really underhanded uh ways that Russ and and other people injected a lot of uh national politics into this whole thing. And the response was, a lot of people here in Wyndham, like myself, got involved to whatever level that we can uh to 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 show our support to the school. And uh when the first vote went through and we kept the school, then Russ pulled whatever it was that he pulled, and then we're voting again for it. Um, and then this budget, I'm really proud of of what you guys have done. You made some hard decisions because you knew that within this community, we have discussed, we have discussed this, we have absolutely nailed this down, that that there is a community here, and we will all support these wonderful kids. This is a very important moment in the history of the country and 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 right here in Wyndham. We're gonna look out for our kids. Um, and and the way that that Erin uh sort of characterized it, it just sort of seemed like, it it's like, no matter what it is, whatever solution is, you find a problem for it. That's kind of a, it's a, it's a no-win situation, and it just seems like people who just want to find problems with every solution, maybe it's time for you to find another hobby. We're, we're, we're trying to work towards solutions that include.
It's not productive, and you picking on people, attacking Russ, attacking people's opinions, is not productive.
Excuse me, excuse me, are you talking, or am I talking?
I think, I think Kermit has the floor.
Good.
All right, hold on a second.
And not productive for an informational meeting about a budget.
No, it's not. Can you imagine how I feel as a board member?
I feel that for you, and this whole meeting.
Listening to another board member, tell me how I'm not reporting.
It's not on you from people asking questions.
Kermit, did you have a?
I was just uh thanking, thanking you all for working the hard work to get the budget down, and for the community for stepping up and being prepared to volunteer, and for Abby finding a great solution and and creating a non-for-profit so that we can all donate uh towards the school and support it in every way we can. And I'm hoping that we will learn more from whatever the different school systems are to find out if other students from other parts of the town might want to, or other, other parts of Wyndham County might want to go to school here. That's a whole other ball of wax. But I'm just grateful for the people who are working to support the school. Um, and I, and I, and I do disagree uh with Russ's disingenuous answer. It was completely crap.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh Tess Pollard, then Bridget Corby, and then it, uh, sorry, Tess Pollard, then Crystal Corvus, and then uh Bridget Corby.
Hi, I'm Tess Pollard. I just wanted to pop on really quick because I have somebody ready for bed. But I would like to do soccer twice a week at Wyndham Elementary School for one hour. Cool. Um, all kids can participate.
Yeah.
All kids can participate. Um, and I think it would be really fun for kids to get outdoor and do an activity together outside of school.
Thank you. That's very generous. Thank you, Tess.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tess.
Uh, Crystal, sorry, you're up. I'm trying to keep everybody in line, or you're.
So my question has nothing to do with this crap because I'm just done with it. Um, so I think they said the boiler was gonna be twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven two.
Your surplus is twenty-two thousand, and I believe you've discussed this before, but I just don't remember. Um, so instead of using all the surplus, are you doing like, gonna use some of the surplus from the boiler, take out a loan for a part because it sounds like we can't use the S R funds for the boiler?
Uh, Greg, this is your chance. This is what you've been waiting for. If you're still there.
I'm here, I'm here. Um, yeah, so, I mean, I don't know how we've decided on funding and whatnot. Um, we've done the best we can to get a um the most functional boiler in there and most functional quote that we can. Um, if you look at the quote that came from Alliance, it came in two parts. Um, an, an install of the boiler and the controls. Um, and I did that. Um, and kind of what I was looking for here was just like, if we want to try to put it out to bid and and get it even lower, I, we, we can. Um, but at the same time, like, the way I look at it is Alliance has been a very reputable and respected vendor for us. Um, and uh I think they gave us a, a, a good number um on that. I don't know that there really is a ton more to be saved. Um, and, you know, so, I mean, I'm not sure how you're funding it, but like I said, is I'm just looking for like, do we want to move forward with it? Do we not? And what do you want to do?
So like.
I'm not sure if that's helpful, but.
My question is, as a board, you probably want to have like some of your surplus left, correct?
Yeah, I would imagine.
I mean, maybe you guys haven't decided on it. I don't know.
I gotta be honest with you. We'll wait to see what happens on Tuesday. Because I'm, I, I, no offense to anybody here, but I'm not putting, I'm not putting that money into a boiler for a school that's not gonna be open.
Yeah.
For what? For somebody else to pick up and do? No, somebody, you know, no.
So Beth, are you saying that, like, you don't think the budget is gonna pass?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I don't know what I, you know, I don't know day to day, you know, you just heard here.
Well, I mean, there's not another vote on Tuesday to close the school. It's, it's about the budget.
It's just about the budget, yeah. It's just, so no, absolutely, this is something we want to do. But I, I just feel like I hear one thing from people, and then all of a sudden I hear something else from people. I just want to get through Tuesday, to be honest with you. That's kind of where I'm at right now. Greg has worked really hard on this, and and he's worked hard with Alliance, and yeah, I want to see this go forward, but I, I can't even, you know, I don't even understand what's happening with our board here. So um, I.
Beth?
Yeah.
Could I say something, please?
Absolutely. And then I think Bridget Corby's up.
So um, this is in direct response to that question. If the budget fails on Tuesday, uh, it will be the new, you know, the board member's job to go back to the drawing board and come up with another budget. And I would say, you know, we've talked about some of the things that are, have been added. Uh, I would say maybe that one of the first things on the chopping block would be Sarah Wonderley's position. And and going back to her being half-time. Uh, I don't think that's a good idea. I'd rather have her a full-time teacher. Uh, but that's a chunk of money, and that's something that could be cut and reduce the, the um tax rate. Um, there, uh, we could uh use, you know, we could get rid of the uh bus fund and um use that five thousand to reduce the tax rate another two cents. Um, I don't think that's a good idea, but um, that's uh, you know, it's a possibility. There are cuts that can be made, but that's, that, you know, the school doesn't close. Uh, that means that the board goes back to the drawing board and comes up with uh another plan. And regarding the, the boiler, um, you know, if we were to go ahead with that, and the school ultimately were to close, that would just add to the fair market value of the building, which, by the way, if the school is not used for educational purposes going forward, um, it would potentially sell for fair market value. So anybody who's thinking about buying the school and making, you know, for a dollar, yeah, that's not gonna happen. It goes for fair market value to meet the requirements of Act sixty.
So I just.
I'm done.
Yeah, no, go, Chris, I have another question.
So Abby Pelton's for Friends of Wyndham, is that a Wyndham group, or is that the Wyndham Parents Group?
I just heard about it myself tonight. So um Abby, are you still on? Or anybody?
Yes, I am.
Thanks. Can you, uh, Crystal had a question about the Friends of Wyndham group.
So the.
Did you hear my question?
So is it um for just for, for the Parents Group?
Is it like Friends of Wyndham? Is that like the Town of Wyndham, or is that the name of your Parents Group?
No, no, the Parents Group is its own group. This is a completely separate organization, not-for-profit. Um, anyone who has interests can reach out and figure out, I know, how they can volunteer their time to support the various missions that the, you know, the group will have and be, be supporting the community. So um, with how everyone is so passionate about uh the children of our community, I just want to point out some positive that behind everyone's anger, there is a drive to care about kids. So please support this organization that shares that view. Um, we have amazing community members that are odd, like, they're just awesome. There's so many cool things in this town, and we are creating a platform to have people connect and have resources and have a means to know about your community um in every different way that there is. So um this budget is an important thing, and everyone needs to have their, you know, questions answered, but um, you know, we're, we're gonna work together, and we're gonna get through this together as a community. So thank you very much, and if anybody has any more questions, please do not hesitate to ask.
Thanks, Abby. Crystal, thank you, Crystal. Um, Bridget Corby, I know you've been waiting, and then it looks like uh Rory, and then it looks like Russ has his hand up, or Joyce.
Hi. So first of all, I apologize. I was like in and out of service, so I've missed a lot. I've been bouncing in and out, and so if I repeat things, or I apologize. Um, I don't really understand why we're talking about the school operational, non-operational, paying more, paying less. This is a budget meeting. I've heard so many people on both sides of the coin say that they care about what's best for our kids. If that's the case, we should be passing this budget because there's not any other wiggle room, and our kids need an education. So there's a lot of opinions, and I get that. I had the opportunity to talk to.
You're here.
Yeah. Um, I had the opportunity to talk to Bill last week. Sorry, I'm also standing in the freezing cold right now, so my dogs don't bark in the background. Uh, but uh, I talked to Bill the other day about the budget and asked him some questions, and it was definitely interesting. I think Wyndham as a whole has a lot of challenges as a town that is not the responsibility of the school board, but unfortunately, the school and our kids suffer the consequences. Um, we don't have a lot of families. That has an effect on us. Um, right now, we have no way of attracting new families because there's no housing. That's a bigger, bigger Wyndham piece. Our CLA is terrible uh because everything's sold for more than it should. Um, and those things aren't solving our problems overnight, but if if everyone has such a concern about the budget, how expensive. about the budget and how expensive it is, there's not a lot the school can do right now. And if the budget fails, it's a direct impact on our kids. They lose. So I, I like feel very passionately about this. This should be about our kids. I'm not happy about the tax rate either. We're a family. We're raising kids. I don't want to spend that, but it's, it's the option that we have. I think that if the town really wants to look at how we can change our tax rate, that's going to be more productive than arguing about whether or not we have or don't have things. That doesn't matter in this conversation. We can spend the next year working towards adding things or not adding things, whatever we want to do, but the conversation right now is whether or not this budget passes. And if it doesn't, um, it's a direct impact on all of our kids that are going to the school. And that is the end of my conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you, Bridget. You're amazing.
Thanks, Bridget. Um, it looks like, uh, Ross or Joyce coming has your hand up.
Rush just wants to make a comment. If we were to take the number of families in Wyndham and double the homestead valuation of property, right now we have twenty seven million dollars worth of homestead property. If we were to increase that to fifty four million dollars and still have the same number of kids in the school, our tax rate would not change. The key element to getting the tax rate to go down is getting more children in the town. That's the key to getting the tax rate to go down. If, if the number of students fell in half from what they are now, our tax rate would double, more than double. The key is you gotta get more children in the school on a long-term basis. And that means providing affordable housing for families who have children to move into town. And seventy percent of the property in the town is owned by vacation homeowners. And that's not going to change. It's been increasing year after year after year. And someone said to me several years ago, when I was a vacation homeowner, why do you care about the tax rate? You can afford to pay it. That's not the right attitude. And I.
Can I respond to that though?
Pardon me?
Can I respond to that though, Russ? Cause I, it feels like you're responding to my, my statement. Can I respond to that?
Sure, you can.
So you're right, but one that doesn't help us tonight, I think you're right. I think that, I think that all of that is a factor in it, but to me, there's like a community-wide, maybe select board, affordable housing conversation. And, and I know that you feel like if we are non-operational, we'll attract more families, but the elephant in the room is we have this crazy housing market in Vermont. There's nothing available. So today, it's really important to look at the budget that we have for next year before that problem is fixed.
Bridget. The, the house that's next to you, just a little bit to the north.
It was Beth speaking.
Oh, okay.
I'm not saying.
It's, it's sold for a hundred and seventy-five percent over its assessed value. That's not going to change and the CLA is going to continue to go down for the next two years and there's nothing we can do about it. So our tax rates are going to be elevated no matter what we do.
Okay.
Russ, excuse me, Russ, that, but you have to, sorry, I don't mean to cut you, cut you off, Beth. But Russ, actually those, those tax rates are calculated year to year. So now this year yours becomes, you know, kind of like that becomes your new norm. So, you know, it, it could, you know, it, I don't believe that it will go super crazy far off of that if you stay continuing to, um, sell above, above, you know, highly above market value. Now, obviously a hundred and seventy-five percent is going to throw that off, but, um, just wanted to throw that in.
It's a three-year rolling average. So you have the two thousand eighteen or nineteen, twenty and twenty-one years or eighteen, nineteen and twenty years. Next year you drop eighteen and it's nineteen, twenty and twenty-one. So the three-year rolling average as the CLA is going to go down for this current year, two thousand twenty-one, which was the last year. It's going to continue to go down. The average rate is going to decrease.
Right.
Right.
Thank you. I have, sorry, somebody in the room here, Erin?
Yes.
Wanted to speak and then it looks like Carolyn and, yeah.
So I, I kind of wanted.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, um, Beth.
Beth, you wait. Uh, Joyce, I'm sorry. It's somebody else in the room that wanted to speak first.
I had raised my hand rather than Russ. When I'm shown is Russ, but that's okay. I'll wait.
Okay, Erin's gonna go and then, uh, Carolyn can, can Joyce go and then you?
So I wanted to piggyback off of Bridget Corby's statement. This is an informational budget meeting. We should be talking about the budget as it lies right now. I do, um, I personally want more in the budget and if that does, you know, equate to a higher tax rate for the children of this town to get more services as foreign language, such, because one of children's mind is young, it's molded better for foreign language. And if we all paid more, you know, that wouldn't also be bad since we all love our children. As best stated, if we could get more people in the town to pay more money for more services, that would be great. So we're either going to vote on this budget and agree to vote on this budget or let it pass or turn it down. And if we turn it down, my hope is that we would add more things to the budget to give our kids a better chance, a better, more services, more things, more everything that people want. That's what I would like to say. And that's what we should be talking about this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Uh, Carolyn, um, is it Joyce? I'm sorry, Joyce.
Joyce, Beth called on you.
Um, I'm sorry, um, I've had several comments. I've been like making notations because I didn't want to interrupt the discussion. So, with regard to the comments about Russ and his anti-school, all of my comments, I want it to be clear, they were mine and mine alone. Russ and I do not act as one unit, just like Carolyn and Alan voted one side or versus against wind turbines. And Kathy and Cord Scott voted, voted one side versus against school turbines. So please, please do not attribute my comments to Russ. That would be like my number one issue. Secondly, um, Abigail with the five oh one C three, I support it wholeheartedly. If it is truly a five oh one C three for the purpose for which it was established. And my issue is if it is supplanting the school budget versus supporting the education. I have an issue with the idea of supplanting the budget. The budget calls for certain things and they're not even in the budget at this point. So I don't see the point of a five oh one C three at this point because those programs are, which could be funded perhaps through a five oh one C three are not in the budget. Maybe they could be funded through a five oh one C three, but I disagree with the idea of supplanting programs if the taxpayers don't agree with it. And, um, with regard to Bridget Corby's comment in terms of the towns and the tax rates and how some of us are suffering through the CLA and the COD. Wyndham, I'd like to remind you is one of twenty-plus towns in the state also undergoing the exact same situation. So it's not unique to Wyndham. And lastly, I simply want to apologize to Beth. I didn't mean to make this meeting a headache for you. I applaud you for your efforts all along and if I had a question, I would simply ask, why didn't you ask Michael McLean to moderate this meeting? He is still the town moderator and the school moderator. And he could have spared you, um, so much of the emotional turmoil. And I'm sorry, Beth, I don't mean to attack you. I'm just asking questions. I know it's difficult, but you could have asked Mike. I'm done. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Joyce. I'm sorry. I, um, this is tough for everybody and I'm, I'm sorry. It, it sounds like this is hitting you hard and I, I apologize that also. Um, I didn't ask Mike McLean. I have it in the past and I have, I've known Mike for a long time. He's an amazing moderator for the town. I guess I just have high hopes that, um, I've, I've been on this little board for fourteen years. I've been in this town since nineteen ninety-nine and it's been a lovely town. I guess I always just believed that maybe we wouldn't need to have a moderator, that we can all just speak as community members, just to agree or disagree, whichever. So this was certainly nothing against Mike. Um, I, yeah, I guess maybe I should have thought about that, but I think for the most part, we should all be able to listen to what, you know, what we all have to share. So, um, I appreciate your contributions and I'm sorry that, um, that this has been tough. Believe me, I'm looking forward to better days. Um, Joyce, unless there's anything else, um, I had a hand from Carolyn and then it looks like Abby Pelton and then Greg Frost.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Beth. Um, I, um, I, I wanted to, um, say that I, I agree partially with Russ that it would be helpful for our, uh, tax rate to have more children. That's, that's absolutely true. However, it would also be helpful if the CLA was at a hundred percent. I mean, our, our tax rate is up about thirty cents because of the CLA. No other reason. If it was not, it would be about five cents more this year than it was last year. And I will also say I'm asking around here in the State House about the potential for holding CLAs at last year's level. I haven't had a whole great reception, but if I can make the argument, as Joyce said, that forty cents is, um, I mean, forty other towns are dealing with this. I, I find it hard to believe that there aren't more than forty towns since the realist market everywhere is, is, um, so hot. But the other thing I'd like to say is that, uh, in terms of this fundraising five oh one C three, uh, we can, we can, we can't, we can't supplant things like art and music or other, other, well, maybe we could mandatory programs with fundraised money, but we could, uh, we could raise funds for a lunch or meal program. So that is a possibility and I love, uh, Abby's energy behind this. I am um, going to be helping her with this and, and if we could raise some funds, we could do a meal program. But I also think it's very important that we know which parents are going to actually have kids at the school next year. It will, I think that intra-supervisor reunion uh, choice thing is still up in the air, uh, but I want to make sure we know who's going to be there so we don't put a whole bunch of money aside and then have parents say, no, they don't want it. Uh, and I'm also going to be glad to work with Bridget Corby, who I don't think is, I don't know if she's still on the call or not, but at any rate, um, I, I just wanted to make those couple of points. So, thanks.
Thank you. Um, Abby Pelton and Greg Frost and then Russ or Joyce coming back on. Go ahead, Abby.
Hi, thank you. Um, so the, the idea of the, the idea, the nonprofit, the organization, Friends of the Wyndham Schoolhouse, is not to offset, uh, taxes, but um, I believe we should continue to have this conversation. I want to echo, you know, Bridget and Erin. We need to, we need to figure out this budget. And whatever course that is, we can do it with kindness. We do not need to be mean or hurtful to anyone. Um, this, this is our community and we're going to work together to figure out how we can provide what's best for our kids. That's the important goal. And I by no means want anyone to think that we should not continue to fight for them in legislature and continue to push for them to provide us with what they should be providing us with. But in the meantime, our kids are the ones that are going to school. So we want them to have stuff. We're going to get it. We're going to make it happen. And, um, you know, school choice, it supports school choice, it's inclusive, um, everything. So it's, it's a really great organization. And, um, I just want everyone to try to remain positive, focus on the budget. And if we need to push it along, then we're going to push it along. And if we, if we don't, then we don't, but we need to, we need to figure that out and that's.
Thank you, Abby. I think you just cut out the last couple of words, but I think your sentiment was heard loud and clear. So, um, thank you for that. If you want to come back on, just holler. Uh, Greg Frost. Can we lose audio?
No, he's muted.
No. Oh, Greg, are you muted?
I sure am. I love that. Okay. So I, I wasn't, um, I hadn't really reviewed your, um, funding structure for the Boiler Project, if I'm being completely honest. The, but I just, while we were sitting here, I submitted it to Efficiency Vermont because they, there is, um, money available through them for variable, uh, drive pumps, which we would be installing as part of your Boiler Project. And if we do, if we were to come up short, we could offset it, um, on July one. We would act, we would have access to, um, excuse me, the, um, the safety grant through VISBIT, which is the district's insurance company, uh, which is what paid for the edging in the mulch on your playground this past, uh, summer. So if, if we absolutely have to do that, that, that's another option. Um, that is something where maybe you could, you could fundraise too. Um, so there's, there are a lot of things. Um, there's a lot of ways to get there from where we are and we're in, and with what you have. And I also think, you know, thinking about your budget and talking about your budget and the things you have going, I, I'm also really excited about the meeting, um, next Wednesday. If you are all interested, um, Beth, I think you have the, the link. I believe you could share that out from there. So reach out to her and, and, um, and, you know, we can all sit down and talk about that, about, you know, what the different options are and, and what are, you know, what would make the most sense for Wyndham, because there's, there really are a lot of options, whether, whether you're part of the National School Lunch Program or not, um, whether it's in-house or it's, um, you know, or it's through, um, the, the food program from when, uh, from Leland and Greg, right? Um, and they all come with pros and cons, right? Whether it's a lot of transportation and transporting food and then transporting dishes back and forth or making us a smaller investment in more kitchen stuff to do your own dishes there and serve it there. And maybe even, um, I remember a couple of months ago, somebody talked about running it right outside of the school lunch program so that you could do, um, you know, so that you could do everything else there. So, um, I think that, you know, I think that there's a lot of good there. Um, and I wanted to update you all as well that we got some asbestos testing done in your building. So if you were to want to do your activity room, that is also a wonderful thing you could fundraise for, right? Is for the flooring, because I believe Eric, I can't think of his last thing I'm drawing blank, but he had said, he works for Reed and Son. And he, I believe, had, um, made a comment at one point about potentially being able to come up with some volunteer labor. So there is, so there is no asbestos under that floor. So you could just have, um, those guys tear it up. You wouldn't have to have, say, a cat amount tear it up or anything, um, which is really good news. And we were able to save you a lot of money on that testing because, um, West River Ed at Leland and Gray Townsend in Newbrook had a bunch of testing recently done. And so I just had her swing up to your place and do the testing there and that saved you. I haven't gotten the bill yet, but the tests are 15 bucks apiece and her labor rate when she's already in town is only 85 bucks, but she's from Burlington. So we save, you know, you save $500 or $600 at minimum there. Of, of being able to do it while, while she was down for the West River project. So, um,
Great.
I just wanted to kind of give you some of those things as you think about, you know, your school and your budget and, and your future up there. So, um, we, we do have some things going on the, on the building maintenance, building improvement side of things that I think are exciting and have a lot of potential to, you know, to maybe not directly affect kids' learnings, but affect their surroundings. And, and their, you know, and how they feel about their school. So just thought I would give you guys all that as you figure out your, uh, your, your budget. All right?
Please figure out some things. Thank you, Greg. I appreciate that. And I think we were talking about Eric Milikowski.
Yeah, possibly. Yeah.
Okay.
He helped with the playground. Bigger guy.
Yep, yes. Dynamite. Thank you for that update. I appreciate it. Uh, Russ or Joyce coming, you're on.
Um, I would just like to address the difference between the coefficient of dispersion, which is COD and the CLA, which is the common level of appraisal. Back in 2014, the common level of appraisal or CLA was 104.59, but the coefficient of dispersion was 20.42. That number, the COD, triggered the reappraisal that occurred in the year 2015. This year, in, in 2021, the CLA is 83.74 and the COD is 20.45. So we've had a double hit requiring the reappraisal. The most important issue is the CLA is the only factor that affects the school tax. And it is basically a comparison of, on a three-year rolling average, the sales price of real estate in the town versus the grand list values on a rolling average over a three-year period. And I've been a lister now for four years and what I have observed is there are a number of individuals in homes in town that make improvements in their property and they do not fill in a form with the zoning commissioner. So what, we have an opportunity to reappraise their properties every April 1. And as a result of that, some homes have done significant improvements and, uh, and increased the value of their property and we haven't, as a lister, been able to increase their value. Now, I know people don't want to pay more in taxes and I understand that. But part of having the listers keep the, the list current to the current market value means that we need to know if you're making improvements and putting in a new bathroom, a new kitchen, putting in new windows or making other improvements in your property so we can increase the value slowly over time. And that would help reduce the rate of the CLA increase over time. It's an endemic issue and it's something that has happened for a long period of time. Right now, we've been caught up in two issues, both with the CLA and the COD. And we must do the reappraisal as soon as we, as soon as we can.
It's not a question of we must.
It's statutory. It's required by the statutes. And unfortunately, 2025 and 2026 is the time dates that we're getting from the reappraisal firms that they could do it in Wyndham. So we're stuck with this problem for the next two to three years, for which I am sorry.
Problem is increased taxes.
Okay. Um, thank you for that. Those are good things to keep in mind. Um, Greg Frost, it looks like you still have your hand up. Okay.
Sorry, my fault. Didn't mean to do that. I'll fix that.
It's fine. I just wanted to double check. Um, okay. Uh, there's been a lot of information here. Was there anything else on, uh, I mean, this is all about the budget. A number of other things. So unless there's anything else, uh, we could move on to new business, which, uh, Russ, go ahead, or Joyce.
Yeah.
New business.
Yep.
So, um, I'm not sure if this is the point in the agenda. New business, I'm not quite sure. I don't see it on the agenda, but, um,
Masks. The mask issue was though.
I'm sorry. I'll, I'll deal with it on the public comment. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Thank you.
Oh, that's fine. Um, I don't really have any other new business or other business unless Russ or Carolyn does. I'm more than happy to go on to public comment, quite frankly.
So my only comment would be, again, um, an apology to you. This meeting has been difficult for you and I understand that. And why was not Michael McLean as school moderator asked to, um,
Moderate the meeting.
moderate this meeting as he was the last couple of informational meetings after the first few were so, let's just say, difficult. And then Mike McLean was asked to step in. I'm simply trying to, um, avoid the, the obvious dilemma, the turmoil, the emotional issues you're having. Why wasn't he asked? He is the school moderator as well as a town moderator. And I get it. You're capable of conducting a meeting, but this has been difficult for you. Let's face it. So why wasn't he asked is my only comment. Thank you.
Uh, again, Joyce, I'm, I'm sorry. I guess I, again, I just, I've lived in this community for a long time and I had high hopes that I could handle, uh, the community which I, I feel very involved with. So I guess I won't make that mistake again, which I think is kind of sad. So, but that's fine. If, uh, if we need to have a moderator, I don't know. Do we ask the select board that same thing? I, I don't know. Are we asking Maury Bell if, if the town moderator should be coming in? Um, if that's the case, if that's what people want, then, then that's certainly something we can do. But, um, our board maybe, our board meetings have been fine. Um, I realize that we're not all going to agree, but, um, I've, I've done this, I've been working on this for a long time. So, um, I guess I'll, I'll keep it in mind for, for next time. Um, Russ, or sorry, well, Russ and Joyce, I see your hand is still up and Carolyn's hand is up. Really honest with you, I'm, I'm about done. Um, no offense. I'm, I'm kind of looking at everybody else on the Zoom. I just want to be sure if there's anybody else that has something to contribute, please do so now. Um,
Beth?
Yep.
All I was going to say was kind of in response to Joyce that I had heard you answer that question already.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if she didn't catch it, but I heard you answer it.
Yeah, it's fine. I will, I understand. It, it is a tough situation. Um, I guess I have faith in a community of, what? Over 300 that maybe we can conduct ourselves, um, in a way where we can just continue to move forward together in this tiny, beautiful, amazing town that we all love. So I'm going to go with that. Was there anybody else? Uh, Russ and Joyce, I see your hands still up. I just want to make sure, um, you had anything else to add.
I'm sorry, it's Joyce. I don't understand Carolyn's response in terms of whatever she just said that Russ responded to because it was not my response.
Um, Carolyn, she was just saying that, that I, I had answered it before, but she, she thinks maybe you just, maybe you missed it. That the question came up before as to why I didn't ask Mike McLean. I, I gotta be honest with you. I, I never, didn't even think of it and I like Mike very much. I just saw him the other day. He's a wonderful person. Um, and I will certainly, for other big meetings, I will keep that in mind. Um, for regular board meetings, no, I will not. Um, but yes. I, and I'll have that special with him. I'm happy to do that. Was there anything else, um, from anybody?
Yes, this is Gail.
Hey, Gail.
I don't know how to raise my hand, but anyhow, I think that that's been talked to death and, um, we didn't think that we would need Mike at this meeting. So, um, I think we could probably call it a night for everybody.
Yeah, okay. Um, so unless there's something else.
I'm of adjournment.
We're going to move. Well, um, Beth, I would like to say, I would like to say, just like the other informational, so-called informational meetings, um, which were not
24th and 28th.
Um, I don't know how to describe those meetings, but they were not as, let's just say, informative as most taxpayers would like because they were embroiled in controversy. That was my question with regard to why Mike McLean was not asked. He was asked to moderate the last school board meeting because after the first two, it was just an all-out, I don't know.
Yeah.
I can't use those words here. So it was just
Because of Russ.
Let's put it there. And so you and I agree. And, um, Mike was Mike McLean and he's a town moderator. He has moderated the town informational meeting and I'm just curious why he wasn't asked to moderate the school information, informational meeting because he is both the town and the school moderator.
Joyce, you've, Joyce, you've asked us three times.
So it's fine. It's, um, so I'm going to, I'm going to keep that in mind for the future. This, this was just an informational and we had Lori Garland, the chief financial officer here, who really is the person to answer a lot of, I guess, what I assume are going to be budget questions. So, but I will, I'm going to make a note to have a conversation with Mike McLean, um, this week to move forward. I see two more hands. Um, Michael Pelton and then again, Russ Joyce coming. And then I'm sorry.
I have to stop the recording because it's been another 45 minutes. So I gotta stop it and then restart it again.
All right.
We're going on to three and a half hours.
Mike Pelton, you're going to have to hold on.
What? I just, here.
It's not recording. It's open recording. Push this.
I am, I am saying. I'm stopping. Okay. Now I'm going to start it again, right here.
Missed first, she missed the first half.
Into recording. Okay, we're recording again.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Michael Pelton has had his hand up.
Um, I just want to thank Carolyn for dedicating her life to, um, our town in various ways to include as a school board member for a significant amount of time. And I also would like to, um, well, I guess, uh, point out that my wife is running for school board. Um, and I have great aspiration. I believe that she's going to do a fantastic job and that she will represent our town well. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I appreciate that a lot.
Thanks, Mike. Um, Russ or Joyce coming? You have your hand up. Okay.
And I'm of adjournment.
Uh, yeah, I just, yeah, if, if everybody's all set, Carolyn's moving for adjournment. We will announce, um, the reorganizational meeting time. Uh, we just don't know what it is at this moment. So, but we will let people know. Um, unless there's anything else, thank you, everybody. Uh, Michael, do you have your hand up again? Nope.
Nope, just forgot to put it down. Thanks.
Thank you, everybody for coming. Uh, yes, move to adjourn at 8:35. Thank you.